About that offline. It's always fun to see people enjoying themselves. All right. The Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's customary that I read an open podium invitation at this time of the meeting. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each regular council meeting, which typically occur the first and the third Tuesday of each month. These open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter, so we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. This evening, we have embedded within the regular city council meeting, an HRA meeting. HRA is Housing Redevelopment Authority. Some cities appoint a special body that's separate from the council to serve as their HRA. Here in Eden Prairie, traditionally, the city council has been the Housing Redevelopment Authority. So, I call the HRA meeting to order. Mr. Gettrill, should I have let you, or should I be letting you introduce anything here, or should we jump right into it?
Mayor, you can jump right in.
Perfect. So, the meeting is called to order. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of the last HRA meeting, which was held back on September 5th, 2023, is, well, any items to question within those minutes, and if not, go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the HRA minutes from September 5th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right, Mr. Gettrill, I will now throw to you about the resolution approving the property tax levy.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the HRA. For the same reason, later this evening, on the city council agenda, we have a budget we do for the HRA. So, the main reason, actually, the only reason, the HRA, we're asking them to meet tonight is to approve their budget and levy for 2024. And as has been discussed many years previously, and as was discussed in September, when you set the preliminary budget levy for the HRA, we are asking that you set the levy to be $210,000, and that is a levy and a budget that is customarily covered all of staff expenses related to our housing programs in the city. As you know, we have several sources of funding for our housing projects. We use our HRA levy authority, which could go much, much higher in terms of a tax levy authority, but as a tax levy authority, we simply use it to cover our employee and staff expenses in the areas of housing and redevelopment authority. That number for 20-some years has been around that $200,000 mark. Probably, this might be the second year that it's at $210,000 to cover those employee expenses. So, the action for you is to adopt the budget and the levy. And then, just to mention quickly as a preview, for the entire city budget and levy, the finance manager and I will do a complete overview of the full city of Eden Prairie budget. You will hold a public hearing and act on that at the regular council meeting.
Perfect. Counsel, any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve, to move, to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution certifying the 2024 HRA property tax levy to be $210,000 and proving the 2024 HRA budget of $210,000 as reviewed by the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, is there a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
Move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The HRA, I don't know if I need to gavel. The HRA, but I just like the, yeah, is adjourned. Once, we were having the HRA meeting, maybe in September, the last time we had it, and high school kids were here, and I think they all got excited, the meeting was over. No, 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 just the embedded HRA meeting. All right, moving now back into the regular city council meeting. Mr. Gettrill, and I'm assuming you'll throw it to someone else, we have some proclamation, well, presentate, well, donations, let's just get to it.
We do, Mayor, thank you, donations.
I'm getting there, I'm reading.
I will turn this over to our Park and Recreation Director, Amy Markle.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. We're excited tonight to have received two donations, one for $250 from Spark of Eden Prairie, which will go to senior programming, and another donation from Elam Shores for $500 that will be split amongst a variety of programs and special events there. And all of these funds help offset the costs for seniors and add more to the programs. We're very appreciative of these generous donations.
Nice, and it helps our tax dollars go further. We can't do all this, so we really do appreciate them. Counsel, any comments you want to make? If not, if there's a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $250 from Spark of Eden Prairie and $500 from Elam Shores towards the 2024 Senior Center of Special Events.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, moving on to the agenda, I believe Councilmember Naurian has a council member report you'd like to add. Anybody else want to add anything to it? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Councilmember Naurian's report?
Move to approve the agenda, the addition of Councilmember Naurian's report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, moving on to the minutes, any, we have two minutes to approve, we can do them together, but any items you wish to question for the moment, or edit, or tweak, either from the workshop or the meeting held last November 14? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve both of the meeting minutes?
Move to approve the following city council minute, council workshop held Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, city council meeting held Tuesday, November 14th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we have a lengthy consent calendar, and for those listening in who, or in the audience, who might not know exactly why we put certain items within the consent calendar, they're generally housekeeping, or at least to the point they don't require further discussions. Any council member, though, can ask to have an item polled if you want to speak to it directly, or even have it voted on separately. Anybody have any questions about the consent calendar at all? If not, is there a motion to approve items A through S on the consent calendar?
Move approval of items A through S on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, Mr. Gettrill, we have five public hearings this evening. Sometimes, when you get that many, few of them are housekeeping perfunctory, but these are all important this evening. Not that they aren't always important, but these five are particularly so. Mr. Gettrill.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, all of the other public hearings. This is the only land use public hearing we have. Everything else is related to economic development program, or city budget, or fees, but we will start with our land use public hearing, and we have before us tonight a proposal for Crew Car Wash. This is a car wash proposal at the corner of 4 and 5, one of the former Burger King sites, you may remember. The Burger King sites have become popular redevelopment locations for car washes, and I know, Mayor, as you mentioned at the previous meeting, and I'm sure may come up again, there are covenants that Burger King had in the sale of their property related to not selling to other entities that may sell food, and they had certain covenants, and so that's why you may see a retail operation like car washes coming into these locations and not food-related uses. However, that being said, this is Crew Car Wash proposing to construct a new automatic car wash facility at that location. That I mentioned, the property is 1.35 acres and is zoned, highway commercial and guided commercial for this use, and there are several improvements related to constructing the car wash, and there are three waivers that are being requested related to impervious surface, a side yard, and two side yard setbacks to support the facility. The planning commission heard this presentation unanimously recommended approval by the city council, and representatives from Crew Car Wash are here to walk through their entire proposal. Then, staff and the applicant can answer any questions the council may have, and as you know, with this project, we would have a public hearing and the first reading of an ordinance for the proposal that, again, would come back for a second reading for final approval if the first reading is approved at a future council meeting.
Perfect, please come forward. Give your name and address.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jake Steen with Larkin Hoffman, and my address is 8300 Norman Center Drive in Bloomington. I do have a presentation, oh, perfect, there we are. As staff mentioned, we are here regarding the former Burger King site at the corner of 4 and 5, which I'm sure you are all familiar with. Able to, let's see, okay, there we go. So, who is Crew Car Wash? Crew is a family-owned company, it's been around since 1948, with 45 locations in the Midwest, and four of them are in Minnesota, soon to be, soon to be five here. Crew has purchased this site and owns it, and when they saw the site, they made a concerted effort to get it because they really want to be part of this community and have been, we've been working on the site for a little bit over a year. Are we, are we fighting? All right, pull it. All right, it works. So, Crew, Crew prides itself on a very clean site design, clean building design, and a very efficient operation. The site will have two buildings on it, both an exterior and an interior wash, and we estimate, on average, about three to five minutes from the time a customer enters the site and leaves the car wash. About 10% to 20% will then enter the interior clean, and that might add 10 minutes, 10 to 12 minutes total. But it's a very, very efficient process, very smooth process, and both of these buildings will have the brick facade and the uniform signage that you see. We are seeking PUD flexibility, primarily with respect to the impervious surface due to the location with respect to proximity of, I think, Mitchell Lake. It's about just under 1,000 feet. So, even though we are reducing the impervious surface on site, we do need that flexibility. We're also seeking a parking setback and a side yard setback in the very far southeast corner, and that is to accommodate the employee parking, and then we try to locate the trash enclosures close to the coffee shop's trash enclosure. We have, we did meet with the planning commission on the 13th of November and had a great discussion, and we have been working on a few tweaks to the site plan that we wanted to address in response to some of the feedback that we received. On average, we have about three to five employee parking stalls for each site, but there was some question about whether or not we could accommodate full staff situation on site, so we demonstrated that we could, if necessary, provide eight additional spaces on site for parking without disrupting the traffic flow. And this is in the location of an existing, essentially, a bypass lane, which is very, very rarely used. We've also identified some additional striping on the south end of the interior clean building, and that's intended to reduce the likelihood of any type of conflict between cars entering the site and cars leaving that building. Again, it's usually about one every 10 minutes, one vehicle leaving that building, so it's very low likelihood of creating an issue, but we did want to add that striping to be responsive to those comments. We've also got, we've also been continuing to work on signage. This site, as I mentioned, we own the site, and it's a great site, but because of the location, signage, and the speed on Highway 5 in particular, the signage is really critical. Initially, we had proposed, well, I'm sure you all know, there's a current pylon sign there now, the Burger King sign. That's a little bit too close to the right-of-way, and what we had proposed is a new pylon sign that would be about 20 feet further into the site, and we reduced the height of that, and that's the black pylon sign. In response to some comments and concerns that were raised by staff and discussed at the planning commission, we have proposed a modified monument sign that, again, is, it's an 18-foot sign that is in about the same location, more or less. And third, the third sign that we have up there is an example of what we could alternatively do, which is more or less a hybrid. And it's important to note that this pylon sign is actually co-compliant. This is allowed, which is why we had proposed it. And that being said, you know, we understand that staff has raised some concerns about sign clutter, which I'll address in a second, but this is really critical for Crew. Because of the speed on Highway 5, and because of the distance of the turning lanes, believe it or not, about 60% of our customers are impulse customers, so we want to make sure that they have enough time to see the signage and get over to that southbound turn lane, and it's really important for us, particularly in light of the fact that there is someday going to be an interchange here, and there are going to be additional traffic improvements. And it's so important that, what I've shown is up in the top right corner, you see that west elevation, and what we have proposed is, because we would really like that pylon height, and we would propose to actually remove both the east and west tower signs on the building to eliminate any concerns about sign clutter, but that would be if we're able to get that 18-foot signage that gives us that visibility. I also want to just touch on a proposed easement. This is not subdivision, so there's no easement dedication or right-of-way dedication, but we have, we, like I said, we own the property, we're committed to being in the city, and we really want the site to work, and we want the intersection to function. Hennepin County and city staff have requested dedication of right-of-way. Again, there's not really the mechanism in a subdivision, but we're happy to do it if ultimately that's what helps the site to work. It will end up being about 13% of the site, and there's a fairly substantial cost, but again, if ultimately that's what it takes to make this intersection work, we're committed to it. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have our team from Crew here that can talk about operations. I'm also happy to answer any questions about operations, but we're, like I said, excited to be here.
Excited to have you, too. We're becoming a little bit of, I guess, car wash experts in a way, or at least, we have some questions that were brought up at the last one, so I'm probably going to be speaking for several of you. We had quite a robust conversation with the last group about how they capture their gray water or their wash water, and that I think the 50% percentage idea came up at that, and they're aiming towards higher and higher. Do you want to speak to that, just from an environmental impact standpoint?
Yeah, we have a proprietary state-of-the-art technology system. We similarly capture as much gray water as we can. We capture about 40% today of that gray water and reuse it in the wash, but we also pride ourselves on the fact that we use about 10 gallons less than most of our competitors per wash. So, we've made a real concerted effort to save as much water as we can and use, you know, use safe, biodegradable chemicals, and also, I would note, we don't even use, we don't even use regular salt, we use a special ice melt because we want this entire site to be very clean and very environmentally friendly.
And I said, one other question, then I'll turn it over to any of my colleagues. With car washes, I understand the idea that you have one car per how many minutes on average, but we all know that there are certain times, coming home from work, whatever, bad snow day, two days before, whatever, and you suddenly have a lineup of whatever, 20, 30 cars. How would they stack on this property?
Yeah, is it possible to bring up the site plan again? I can, so what you'll see there, and we'll go to, yeah, that's a good one, so what you'll see there is there's actually three lanes. So, I think, you know, I don't know the exact number, but I think it's about 15 cars can be queued up at any time, so they can move very efficiently and very quickly through the site.
Okay.
And it's intended to prevent exactly that issue. You know, we want more than anybody to have a functioning site, and we don't want those vehicles to be backed up.
Great. Counsel, questions?
I have a couple of questions about the sign.
Sure.
Let's see. I like the, if you could go back to that slide, I like the second one, and what is the height? Is there a difference in height between the first and second?
No, no, so they're all intended to be, again, we're reducing the size to about 18 feet.
Okay.
So, all 18 feet.
And could there potentially, though, since it's wider on the bottom on that base, could there potentially be an obstruction for traffic for cars coming out of their view?
So, this is oriented towards Highway 5. You know, it's going to be east and west on Highway 5. I suppose there is a possibility, which is why we proposed the single pylon, which is kind of a hybrid. All of that is to say that we've got some flexibility. I think we're open to working with staff. Again, the most important thing for us is the location, the height, the design, we're flexible on.
Okay. I actually, looking at it now, I think the third one, because you don't even want to take a chance of having anybody's view be obstructed by a sign, so.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Others?
How many total signs will there be?
That's a great question. I am going to defer to Catherine from Crew Car Wash.
Catherine Rayner from Crew Car Wash. So, we are proposing one pylon sign on the corner, like you just saw, and we're proposing two tower signs, they're channel letters, one on the north side and one on the south side. And then, we have like one or two directional signs that are on the physical ground, and then we have some directional signs on the canopy, which shows customers where to plan to queue.
So, there's three actual signs for the car wash, and does this meet our signage, you know, total? Can staff?
Mayor, members of the council, the signage, as proposed, does comply with the ordinance, that's why there are no sign waivers being requested this evening. Staff is continuing to work with the applicant to fine-tune some of the design and size of those signage features, and we're committed to doing that prior to second reading.
Thank you.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the same questions that Councilmember Nelson had, and I was wanting to make sure that they were compliant, because I was trying to understand it, it looked like an awful lot of signs, but the main thing, if it's compliant with us already. What percent, I got a question, what percent did you say that was impulse on a car wash? It's, I'm kind of curious.
We see about 60%, so 40% subscription, you know, and we, you know, in an ideal world, that would be 100% subscription, and, you know, it would, but, you know, particularly as we're new in the market, that's going to start fairly low. And, you know, what we find is that actually even subscription customers, they're reminded when they see our sign that they want a car wash. So, we get that feedback, and that's why it's so critical for us that we give people that amount of time. We don't want anyone crashing, pulling across three lanes just to get to us.
Thank you. I got, just one more I just thought of here. I know you're talking, you know, as far as the existing pylon from the Burger King. How far does that sit back from the property line now? So I can visualize this one. You're going to go 20 foot back, any idea?
You know, I don't actually know that that distance, I think we could probably bring it up, but we're 20, we're moving it 20 feet away from where that existing sign is.
20 feet away from where that is.
Where the existing sign is.
There's really the question, that one was sitting pretty close to the property line.
Right. So, we're trying to get further back, and then that sign is probably another 40 feet from the building.
Okay, that answers the question. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Naurian.
Yeah, I was just thinking about the water aspect. Where'd that dirty water go? After wash, you clean, reuse it, then the remaining water, it just goes to the sewer system or?
Yeah, it would go into the sanitary sewer.
Just sanitary, right, okay. Going back to that sign, just one comment, can you go back to that slide, please?
Sure.
Here we go. So, when I look at this, I think Ms. Toomey also suggested that that third one and fourth one is at too much blocking, and what is behind it just became too big, and my preference, probably not those two. Just suggestion to staff. So, if I look at it from the left side, right, one, two, three, and, right, so first two, maybe put a fence, which is, okay, we have a difference in opinion here. And the last question. When are you going to take out that ugly old Burger King sign, like a frame standing there? I was driving by and saying, oh, my God, I want to go there and just take it down myself.
No, it's historical, we're requiring that they have to leave, no, it's, there's going to be a little plaque there.
Historical thing.
So, believe it or not, I think, is it the Historical Society came and took the sign, the panel in that sign?
Now, it's just a frame standing there.
Right. I know nothing about it.
So, we, I mean, as soon as, as soon as possible.
Now, it's like a blind frame, like it looks like an antenna, you have or something, it's standing there. So, please do take that down if this is approved all the way through.
Absolutely.
And like Mayor said, thank you for, you know, having your business here. Fifth one?
I didn't say that yet, but I will.
Okay.
No, I will.
I know, I can read his mind.
But we haven't, we haven't approved him yet, so. Thank you. If you want to sit down, and we'll go ahead and convene a public hearing, if we have more questions, we'll call you back up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Counsel, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. You can always ask more questions after we close it. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this issue tonight? Please come forward. So, seeing none, Counsel, why don't you go ahead and close the public hearing? And I haven't heard any negative concerns, so if somebody wants to go ahead and make the motion, we can continue to ask questions and put any conditions on that you wanted, but if someone would make the motion, public hearing closure, and then the rest of it.
I'll move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for a PUD concept plan review on 1.35 acres, and approve the first reading of an ordinance for a PUD district review with waivers on 1.35 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, I didn't hear any concerns from any of you that can't be worked out with staff, so are you comfortable that signage, all those other issues can be worked out before second reading? Then, are we ready to vote? Any other concerns, questions, comments? If not, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes 5-0, welcome. Now, thank you, thank you for choosing Eden Prairie, being in our town. We look forward to having you here. All right, Mr. Gettrill, moving on through to the public hearings.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you. It's been a while since we held a public hearing for an economic development grant proposal. When there are funds available through the Minnesota Investment Fund, these are state funds from the Department of Employment and Economic Development, if there is a business, and we have had a few in Eden Prairie that have asked for these funds to be applied for, the city needs to hold a public hearing and then adopt a resolution supporting the the city needs to hold a public hearing and then adopt a resolution supporting the application of these funds. You will see that the NVE Corporation is asking for both investment fund dollars as part of this item. And earlier on the consent agenda, that didn't require a public hearing. They're also asking for job creation funds. So the same company is looking at getting dollars from two different sources from the state of Minnesota. This particular source of funding would help the NVE Corporation, which is located in the Bryant Lake Business Center on Valley View Road, to do a approximate $6 million expansion to their clean room in their, in their manufacturing facility. Their manufacturing facility, what they do is they manufacture sensors and couplers that acquire and transmit data. So they're one of our very important businesses in Eden Prairie. And again, it's probably been a few years. I know that maybe the last application for funding, and it was successful, was when Climate Tech came to Eden Prairie. And I think there are several more in the Golden Triangle or in business centers that the city has supported grant funding through the state of Minnesota for either a new jobs or investment in their buildings. So in this case, the, these funds will retain high quality jobs and provide a great enhancement to a business in Eden Prairie. As per state statute, the city council is required to hold a public hearing when considering application for these funds. And in this case, I don't know if I mentioned this, it's a $400,000 grant application that NVE is asking for. And then following the public hearing, that you would pass the resolution supporting that application.
So I'm assuming the state legislature, when they passed this, simply wanted to make sure that on their own businesses weren't applying, but that cities were supporting whatever alternatives or whatever renovations or something that was going to occur, just that we had knowledge of it, therefore we are part of submitting? Is that?
Yeah, I would say so, Mayor. I think that in these programs, it, it requires the city to be the applicant, even though it's not our funds. We're asking for state funds. So I think maybe the whole program is set up to funnel it through cities in the state of Minnesota and for cities to pass resolutions, in the case of this one program, to even add in a public hearing for public comment.
Okay. Counsel, any questions before we open up a public hearing?
Somebody from NVE here to ask questions?
Well, that would, that would be in the public hearing.
Yeah, but thank you, Councilmember Orion. So I was, I should mention, yes, we do have a representative from NVE here in case the public or the council has questions for them.
Should we call a person first or no, or?
I think it was my understanding that they didn't have a presentation, but they're certainly here if you had any questions or you wanted to ask them.
Okay. So if you, I'm not sure who it is, if you do want to come up, come up during the public hearing. So I, this is a public hearing, opening up to the public here in the audience. Anyone wishing to address the council on this resolution, supporting this application, please come forward. Give your name and address.
My name's Dan Baker. I'm president and CEO of NVE Corporation. So I'm representing the corporation here today, and our address is 11409 Valley View Road, Eden Prairie. And I appreciate the summary from Mr. Getchow. And as he mentioned, we're an Eden Prairie company. We make a type of electronics called Spintronics, which is based on quantum electron spin. And we've been, we were founded in 1989 and we've been located in Eden Prairie since 1995, so quite a while. And our plan would create 23 well-paying jobs, a chance to make a dent in the universe, as we say, over three years. And the application was received and approved and supported by Mr. Lindau as well as city staff. So we, we do appreciate your support and look forward to expanding and adding jobs in Eden Prairie, which has been our home for, for many, many years.
Thank you. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
We want to support you the way we can. I wish I knew more about quantum electrons. I'm not well-read on that one, but it sounds very sophisticated.
Well, we're, we're fortunate to be able to work on some amazing things and to, to do it right here in Minnesota and, and right here in Eden Prairie.
Great. So we're glad you're here too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council? So, counsel, seeing no one, if you want to close the public hearing, I'm assuming this is not housekeeping, but that we're all pretty excited about helping out a business in our community, especially, I don't say other people's money, because it's all our tax dollars, but especially money that's not directly channeling through us. So with that, if anyone would like to make the motion, please do so.
Move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution supporting application to the Minnesota Investment Fund by the City of Eden Prairie on behalf of Eden Prairie-based company, NVE Corporation.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Good luck. We wish you the best on that. I've heard, I'm pretty optimistic. I mean, there's good, we've had a good track record, so wish you well. All right, Mr. Getcho. Resolution certifying 2024 property taxes.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as I mentioned when the HRA was meeting, it is that time of the year, the last meeting of the year, for the city council to consider your property tax levy in your budget. You, you've met throughout the course of the year, and we'll cover this in our presentation, all the way back to strategic planning, receiving survey results, putting a budget together, discussing it in the summer, setting a preliminary levy in September, and here we are in December. Finance manager, Tammy Wilson, and I, as we have typically done, will walk you through some of the budget highlights, some of the goals of the budget, some of the programs of the budget. I do want to mention as well, so this meeting tonight was advertised in mailing to every single taxpayer in the city of Eden Prairie, stating to them what their taxes, what their value that was established early in the year will be for the taxes that they will pay in 2024, and gave them the opportunity to come to a city meeting, a school meeting, a county meeting. But this meeting for the city of Eden Prairie was set for tonight for the public hearing that we will hold, that every taxpayer was notified of. So typically, we have our city assessor here as well. And he's been outside in the hallway, because as happens many times, people may come and they don't necessarily have a question about city budget or the city levy. They may have questions about their value statement, the statement they receive, the value of their property. And that's not a process for this evening. That's something that was established earlier this year when people received their value statements and they had their opportunities and steps to go through. But as you will see, I have some slides that talk a little bit about our values, our value changes, different value rates, but we always have our city assessor here because he can sit down and individually talk with every property owner about any questions they were have with their value. And that obviously continues past this meeting. So with that being said, Mayor, we will start with Ms. Wilson, our finance manager, and myself. We'll walk through the budget and then answer any questions the council or the public has. We will hold a public hearing and then ask that you take action on the 2024 tax levy and budget.
Great.
Allow me to present. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to solicit input on the city's proposed tax levy and budget. And as Mr. Getchow had said, it is a requirement of state law, and it needs to be held after the property owners have received their proposed property tax statements. And I believe that the truth and taxation notices were mailed out on November 13th. Also, some of the other entities that will be holding public meetings are the Hennepin County, who will be holding theirs on November 28th, and the Eden Prairie School District, which will be holding theirs on December 11th. So the city prepares a two-year budget. And so for the 2024 budget, that's the first year of our two-year budget. And so starting in February, we kind of kicked off that two-year budget process with the city council meeting to review the city council goals. And then also throughout the year, we've met with the various departments and council just to discuss the 24 and 25 budget. But tonight I will be just reviewing or going over the 24 budget and tax levy. And then later on, we'll be asking for a vote on this budget and levy. So for the 24 budget, we are proposing a budget of $60.3 million, which is a 2.9 million or 5.1% increase. And for the general fund, the budget is 57.5 million. The debt levy is two, or debt budget is 2.4 million, and the capital is at 400,000. So for the general fund revenue budget, we are proposing a budget of $56.5 million, which is a $3.2 million increase or 6%. As you can see, the largest increase is in taxes at 2.3 million or 5.7%. Licenses and permits, which is made up mainly of building permits, is increasing a little bit to, by 2.4%. And when we do our two-year budget, what we have done in the past is for our fees, is in that first year budget, we increase the fees usually about around 6%. And then for the second year, we hold it flat. Well, for the 24 budget, we were able to keep our fees flat from last year, but we were able to increase our revenues a little bit just due to our conservative budgeting practices that we do. Intergovernmental revenue is budgeted at 1.8 million, which is an increase of about $400,000. And that increase is due mainly to the police and fire pension aid that we receive from the state. And it's also due to an increase in our grant revenue, and that's just to bring it more in line with our prior years. So we are seeing a little bit more in grant revenue coming into the city. So this chart is just a breakdown of the general fund revenue. And as you saw on the previous slide, taxes do make up the largest majority of the general fund revenue. And then that taxes are at 77% of the budget. And then the next category is the charges for services, which is made up of mainly the park and rec programs in the community center. And then we have licenses and permits at 7% and then intergovernmental revenue at 3% and other revenue at 2%. So for the general fund expenditure budget, we are proposing a $57.5 million budget, which is an increase of 3 million or 5.7%. For administration, we're seeing an increase of 9.4%, but that increase is due mainly to elections. As you know, we have, we hold elections every other year, and so this is an election year. So that line item will go up and then we'll see it drop down for the next year. For community development, we are only seeing a 0.5% increase. And that is due to, in 2023, we had budgeted for a special area study. And so for 2024, we didn't need that study, so we were able to reduce the budget for that.
Tammy, I have a question. If you, if you remove the election aspect of, from the admin, how much that decrease, how much that percentage will change?
So the elections is about 300,000 of that admin increase.
So it doesn't change that much from 9%, right? Thousand out of 5 million, right?
Yeah, so the increase would be instead of 468,000, it would only be 168,000.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And so police, we are budgeting 19.6 million, which is a 1.5 million increase, which is made up mainly of wages and benefits. But it does include a new program that they're implementing in '24 for cadets. And so their goal is to bring on potentially four cadets. And then public works is budgeted at 6.7 million, which is a decrease of 200,000. And that decrease is due mainly to the street maintenance for asphalt overlay, seal coating and crack filling. And so now we have moved those costs to the pavement management fund, and so they will no longer be paid out of the general fund. And then parks and recreation is at 15.4 million, and that increase is due mainly to wages and benefits. And then just seeing some of the increases with the programmings come back up to levels before the pre-pandemic. So for the budget that we are presenting, we are able to maintain all city services, city services that we have had from the prior years. And the budget also includes funding of a 3% wage base for the employees. And in the general and internal service fund, we have approximately 236 employees. Another area that is reflected in the budget is an increase in health insurance of approximately 234,000. And that is, it's due to, we had a, a cap in '24 of 9%. And so the state requires that every five years, the city goes out for a request for proposal for insurance. And back in 2022, we had gone out for a request and we were able to lock into a three-year contract with health partners. And for 2023, we did see a decrease in our premiums for health insurance. And then for '24 and '25, we were able to lock into that 9% cap. The budget also does include an increase of 3% for the dental insurance. And starting in 2023, we switched over to being self-funded. And so we're hoping going forward that we'll be able to keep the dental insurance increases at a lower amount than if we had to go out to the private to get the insurance from them. Another increase is the workers' compensation, which is increasing about $700,000. And that is due to just the increases that we're seeing all over the state for workers' comp, dealing mainly with public safety and the PTSD claims. And so for the last couple of years, we had seen higher premium increases. And now hopefully going forward, we should see those leveling off. And then as I had mentioned earlier, the election and the cadet programs are in there. And then we also do have an increase for our gas and electric costs. Just over the last couple of years, those fees or rates have been increasing. And so it's, we have it increasing by about $239,000. But over the last couple of years, we have been doing some sustainability projects. And if we did not, if we had not done those sustainability projects, our gas and electric costs probably would have had to increase by over 400,000 instead of the 239. So those projects has helped out. So this slide just shows the breakdown of the general fund budget by department. So as you can see, police makes up 34% of that general fund budget. And then park and recreation is at about 27%. And then fire at 13%, public works at 12, and then administration at 9%, and then community development at 5%. So if you were to break down the budget, the general fund budget expenditures by categories, you can see that wages and benefits make up about 68% of the total expenditures, which is about $39.2 million of the $57.5 million budget that we are proposing. And then the next larger area would be for the facility user charges, which is at 4.8 million and which is about 8% of the budget. And then information technology and fleet service user charges, they each make up about 4% of the budget. And then electricity and other contracted services make up each about 2% of the budget. And then that other category of 6.1 is about 11%. So of that 3.1 million increase that we are proposing, you can see that wages and benefits are approximately 2.5 million of that 3.1, or it accounts for about 83% of that budget increase. And then facilities user charge, their increase in the budget is about 13%. So those two line items make up the majority of the increase in the budgeted expenditures. So those two line items make up the majority of the increase in the budgeted expenditures.
What's an example that falls into that other bucket?
That would be just like, it could be supplies. It's just all other areas besides the ones that are listed here.
Yeah, I think, you know, Mayor, and I mentioned this at a summer workshop, that this is an example of what I would say comes close to zero-based budgeting. And that is, obviously, you have an adjustment in your wages and your benefits, but there are other discretionary costs. Maybe they would be, like, like Tammy said, they're everything down to the the pens and the pencils, maybe to some consultant fees that we may have. And I mean, I give so much credit to all the managers in the city that they don't look at what we spent last year, what we're spending this year, keep it the same, add 2%. They will actually, if there's something that we need to add, they'll add it or they'll completely take that out. So the fact that we have an entire category going down almost $300,000 is a credit to those people that are keeping an eye on the everyday spending.
Thank you.
So based off of the budget that we are proposing, the property tax levy would need to be $44.8 million, which is a $2.3 million increase or 5.6%. And so for the levy for the general fund, it's 44.3 million. The capital improvement fund is staying flat at 400,000. And then the debt levy is at 2.4 million, which is a $151,000 decrease. So for the debt levy, the decrease can be attributed to the change in the required, required debt payments. With this debt levy, we are maintaining or we're remaining at approximately 4 to 5% of the general fund expenditures. And city policy is that we want to maintain between 5 to 15% of the general fund expenditures, as we consider this to be a moderate debt burden. And since 2003, Moody's has given the city the highest rating of AAA. And then we also have the highest rating from standards and pores. And so that's something that not all cities within the state have accomplished. So for the market value, the market value is increasing to $14.3 billion, which is about approximately 7% increase over last year. And so as you know, from last year, we did see a big jump from '22 to '23. And that percentage last year was about 15% increase. So we saw an increase this year, but not as great as what we had seen in the past. And if you break down the market value increase, residential saw about a 4.5% increase, apartments 3.9% and then commercial about 3%.
But that's not just inflation, correct? That's also new construction or any new addition to our tax base.
Correct.
Along with increased value.
Correct. And later on, Mr. Getcho does have a slide to show that, the breakout between the new and the.
So a question, that market value, do you know how they split between commercial and residential?
Oh, the percentage of it?
No, total. I was thinking total. Percentage you are.
Percentage total, like 60, 40 or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Split between commercial and residential and market value. I've always said 60, 40. Is that accurate or not really?
I don't have the exact number. I know our assessors here and has, has that. I think, Mayor, that might be correct. I think that, again, what's really good about our tax base is very diversified. So we have, we have probably a more, a higher percentage of commercial and industrial than most cities because there's quite a bit of value tied up in that. And I'll talk about how fiscal disparities, that hurts us in, in some cases. But I think that might be accurate, Mayor. But if that's the case, most communities are 70% or above in residential.
Residential.
Yeah, so for residential, it's 10.3 million. And then commercial is about 2.6 million. And then apartments is 1.3 million.
Those should be billions, I think.
I'm sorry, billions, sorry.
Thank you.
So based off of the market value for 2024, the median value home for the city this year is $536,400. And based off of, so just for the city's portion of their tax, that median value home would pay $1,582, which is a $54 increase or 3.5%. For apartments, that median value is valued at 18.8 million. And the city's portion of the tax would be $67,864, which is an increase of $1,245 or a 1.9% increase.
So Tammy, just a question here. So the, the actual tax base, the actual tax on the median house, which is the middle house, went up to $54. But that 3.5% tax change would not be really a median. Wouldn't it be in that sense a mean? I'm just trying to think like so many, like, I don't, I bet no one up here got 3.5% of an increase. So, you know, I, I know friends of mine that called and said they got an 18% tax increase. So I'm thinking that 3.5, how would we ever get to that for a median value house and explain that to people? Because it just feels like that would be more, I don't know, talk to me.
So, so there, Mayor, there's a slide I have later that shows different stratifications of value. But the bottom line is, we, that's the median home value. And if you have that home value in Eden Prairie, it, the average increase was about 5% from the year before. So you went from, what, 513? You're, you're, the, the median tax statement, the example tax statement in Eden Prairie showed your home last year was worth like 515. Your home this year is worth 536. It went up about 5 or 6% and your tax went up $54. Every single statement is different. You are exactly correct. That's probably the most sample statement we can give. I've got a slide later that shows in all the different brackets of where your home is valued, what you're probably seeing in the increase. But this is just a kind of an average indicator, but everybody's different.
And to beat that house, you would have had to have had last year's median value, this year's median value, done nothing else to your house.
Didn't build a new garage, didn't, correct. You're correct.
All right. Thank you.
I mean, there could be a house valued at 536 that was at 535 last year. So they all don't change exactly the same either.
And, and this is accumulated. So last year, we had a huge bump. And this year, what was it, 7 something percent?
No, it was like in terms of the residential, it was more in the 4 to 5. Last year, you're, you're correct, it was closer to 20.
Yeah, 20% now on top of it, 3 and 5. So last two years, it's a huge jump for residential. And that one other thing you are saying, Mr. Getcho, last year, the, the, the commercial side, the percentage was lower than the residential side, right? And that's the reason that.
There, the increase in value was way more in residential. So our residential Eden Prairie taxpayers paid more of the share of the increase in the levy. It's just, you know, because the, the amount we collected was only maybe, you know, 4 or 5% more, but homeowners took on more of that, more of that increase in the levy because that's where their values went up so much.
Okay.
All right. So then for commercial, an average of $4, $4 million, the city tax portion would be $14,859 or an increase of $545 or 3.8%. So then if we look at the overall tax, which would include the city, the state, the county and the school district, a median value home would have a tax of $6,158, which is an increase of $285 or a 4.9% increase. The apartment would have a total tax of $255,998, which is an increase of $8,527 or a 3.4% increase. And then the commercial property would have an overall tax of $113,418, but then they would see a decrease of $2,597 or 2.2%.
So why the commercial going down?
I believe too, it's the state's portion. So that tax is.
I mean, the value, commercial property value did not go down, right?
No.
No, it did not. But you have a lot of different formulas in play with all commercial properties pay a state property tax and then they pay into the fiscal disparities pool as well.
And it's the state formula that they're always playing with that. So that, the mix is always going to change every year. That's why it's incredibly complicated to try to predict or explain any individual's, single individual homes, tax that they paid has about 15 variables to it. And frustrating, I get it.
Mayor, and I, again, previewing this, I've got a slide on how, how taxes are calculated for a homeowner. I'm going to walk through that. I'm going to explain that. It's actually, it's three or four steps. Commercial, council member in Orion, totally different ballgame.
Okay, we probably want to move this along a little bit, but go ahead.
So then if you were just to break down that overall city tax or overall tax on the median value home, this is just a breakdown of the percentage of the taxes and where it goes to. So you can see that the school district receives 36% of that $6,158. And then Hennepin County receives 30%. And then the city receives 26%. And then other taxing jurisdictions receive that 8%. And then this is just the breakdown of a commercial property. So you can see the state general tax receives about 20%. Fiscal disparities, 30%. The school district, 17%. And then the county at 16 and the city is at 13%. So just a couple more slides before I turn it over to Mr. Getcho. But if you were to break down that $1,582 that the median value home pays on the city tax, their monthly cost would be $131.83. And then that would be get, would be $125.71 to the general fund and then about $6 to the debt and capital fund. And then if you were to further break down the general fund portion, and I won't read all of them off, but you can see the biggest portion of that money would be going to police and park and recreation. And with that, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Getcho.
That's, I realize these are average numbers, but that's a really important, critical slide because it does show the value. I mean, this slide probably represents as much as any slide we've shown so far, the value that each of us get. What do we get for that money that we're being taxed on? And if you think about the importance of public safety and you look at 58, over half of that is going toward keeping people safe in this community. And, and again, people move into our community because it's high quality. And I think people feel safe in Eden Prairie. And that's, that doesn't come free. Thank you, Tammy. Good job. All right, we've been hearing about this slide, Mr. Getcho.
Well, there's a few, Mayor. Thank you, thank you.
Really, really good here.
I don't usually try to.
The anticipation's building.
Try to set the bar too high on a budget presentation. But really quickly, I do, I want to take a step back really quick and kind of take it to kind of a bigger, higher level picture. Because you, as council members, know, as Tammy said earlier, we, every other year, we do this two-year budget process. And you have to approve a budget and a levy every single year, and we do that. But in terms of how we prepare budgets, we do them two, two budget years and one year. Next year, we'll prepare a capital improvement plan. That is timed around the same time in the year, every other year, where we send out a statistically significant and valid survey to our residents to gauge their feelings, their opinions on how we're doing. We ask all kinds of questions about not only the characteristics of the community that I think are important. We ask a few open-ended questions about what you like most and what you're concerned about. We ask a lot of questions about your feeling of safety and the amenities we have. And I think we have over 50 or 60 questions about every single city service that we provide. You, as a council, spend quite a few hours receiving the results of the survey. We put together just kind of a brief brochure that might not, two-page brochure that might not play out really well over, over the screen here. But what I want to show is that when you move into setting your city budget, you want to know what your residents may think of the, the city service levels that you provide and the type of budgets that you want to set throughout the community. And it's, it's been pretty consistent throughout the last several years that we rank near the top in the nation when being surveyed of comparable cities about several of our services. Not only our overall services. I think we, we had a workshop with our, our state legislators earlier. And, and one of the council members mentioned that we were surveyed as the 10th highest rated city in terms of police services out of over 400 cities, 500 cities in the comparable-sized cities in the United States of America. And that's the same with how we preserve our natural areas, our paths and walking trails, our customer service that we provide and our snow removal, kind of every area of all our departments. So that leads into what type of budget that we want to set. And it builds off of the citywide goals that the council has set, focusing all of our department work plans and delivery of services around these six pillars related to that community safety, delivering high-quality services in a beautiful preserved environment, being innovative and sustainable in what we do, having an economically high vitality in our community and having a sense of community. We build off many of those goals. The goals for this two-year budget and the later slides, I'm going to run through really quick because Tammy covered that. But at a higher level, the key is high-quality services that the residents feel are being delivered at a high quality at a very reasonable price. And you talked a little bit about that price, Mayor. And I'm going to show some slides on how we compare regionally. Also, having really strong financial policies, maintaining a balanced budget, being really conservative about the revenues you bring in. So most years, we're over in revenues, under in expenditures. And those are additional dollars that we can send to our capital improvement fund. And thinking long-term, we're always thinking long-term. Also, as Tammy noted, 70, 80% of our operation is, and the money and the energy is people or, or a service-oriented business. So it's really important to our staff, our council, our leadership to have a, you know, an engaged workforce with high levels of morale and having recruitment and retention and organizational development with a diversity and inclusion focus around our employees and also having competitive pay. We think that's important. These slides I'm going to go through quickly because Tammy covered these. We, the, the more detailed goals on this budget, we do have all these elections coming up in admin. We've got quite a bit of capital work that we're doing with all of our fire trucks and the remodeling of our police department. We're doing a major staffing study in our police department next year. Tammy talked about the cadet program. We're always working on our parks and open space and trail and our facilities. Round Lake is the newest major park facility project that will be completed this next year. We've already had major upgrades at, at Starling Lake and at Lake Riley. Tammy talked about some of the sustainable work that we're doing, some of the infrastructure work we're doing. And also, we're going to continue to work at our affordable housing policies and programs and implementing our race equity plan. So a lot of these things are goals that council members have set in strategic planning sessions, have been built into, from community feedback and have been built into the budget as well. Finally, as it relates to goals of the budget, it's always very important to have a sense of community and community events. And I would say that's also been a focus the last several years. We've had more events, enhanced events, more attendance at events, more activities, more engagement opportunities with the community, with, with the city council kind of going out to different locations and areas to engage with people. And finally, to be on the cutting edge of technology on how we deliver services and being a 24/7 city hall. I think we have. many aspects of being a 24/7 hall, 24/7 city hall. Again, this is a reiteration of what we're seeing with property value adjustments. So when you kind of break it down in residential commercial apartments, you're seeing that growth, as mentioned earlier, in new development and existing development. And this year, again, commercial and apartments outpacing residential. Residential had that big jump last year. Tammy showed the slide with $14 billion in overall value. What I will say is even more important than that is how that relates to the city tax rate. And the city tax rate is a function of the money that the city collects divided by the value of property in the community, and we've seen a steady decrease in our tax rate. It's now under 30%. It's actually proposed to be 28.35%. And I'm going to show you an example about how that relates to a person's individual tax. But before I do that, Mayor, this goes back to you can never really capture what people's property taxes are because there's tens of thousands of individual tax statements that may depend on improvements that you did to your property, a home that you may just have purchased. But one thing that we do note in our community, when we look at all the detached, single-family homes in our city, there are different rates of growth in those areas. And I'm going to say, as you know, we talked about this a lot last year, the city's values are completely based on what properties sell for. They're not, there's no other special formula. There's formulas related on how close that ratio has to be, but based on how properties sell in our community and the types of property, what they sell for is what we have to value them at. So you will see at those levels up to 400,000, the actual increase in people's tax is more in the under 2%. But at those higher ranges, when you get above $730,000, that's where the average growth in the market value was closer to 9% in that area. And then that relates to a tax increase closer to 8%. But you saw that median example that was closer to 3% or 4% and a tax that was closer to 3% or 4%, but it does vary depending on the value of property that you may have as an individual because I think we're seeing that at the highest, highest level of homes in Eden Prairie, those were selling at a much higher rate, that the sales were higher, so the values were higher, the taxes might be higher. But overall, when you average everything out, it's lower than 5%. This is that piece about how complicated it can be to figure out what your tax is. So the state of Minnesota, and this chart, I know it's not easy to read if you're watching, but the state of Minnesota, the legislature establishes the rates of taxation, and they're called class rates. So different types of property have different rates, even within the residential realm. When a home is valued over a half a million dollars, a slightly higher rate kicks in on your value of property over a half a million. Then there's agricultural value, there's value on apartments, and there's even values, you know, if you own a cabin, you're taxed differently on your cabin property. So example of that median-valued home and what that home would pay in taxes would be you simply take your value and you multiply it by the state class rate. For residential property, 1%. So it's easy up to half a million dollars. If your home is worth $400,000, your tax capacity is 4,000. $300,000, 3,000. Gets a little more complicated when you have to do the percent in a quarter. Over 500,000, but that median-valued homes' tax capacity is 5,455. Simply multiply that by the city's rate. Couple slides ago, I said that the amount of taxes a city collect divided into the amount of value you had determines your rate. You multiply the individual capacity by that rate. And the city taxes on that home, absent a $36 market rate referendum that's due to a market rate debt, is 50, $1,582. The argument that I make is that every, every city divides that same class rate and value by their own property tax rate. So I'm not going to throw out individual cities, but that 28.35% for Eden Prairie is one of the lower rates in the area. There are cities that have city tax rates of 50%. So if you take the 50% tax rate, that $536,000 homes' taxes are over $2,500.
And Rick, I just want to add-
Sure.
Just to make, show how complicated it is, if you live in a house that is four-bedroom, three-bath, and built and making all this up 1995, and it's got a two-car garage, and you go west into somewhere, Waconia somewhere, right, and you see a house that's very similar, or maybe go further west than that, wherever it is, and you see a similar house, it might have a value in Eden Prairie of 700,000, but 600,000 there. So when we look at our taxes and say we pay higher taxes, it could be that some of our values are higher because people want to live here. The market runs and rules that one. So it's not, our rate is low, our values are high. That's actually a really good thing if you sell your house. It just complicates that final tax that you pay. And so in some cases, we appear to pay higher taxes in Eden Prairie because we have higher values, because we are a more popular place to live. People are willing to pay more to live here. So it does, it just gets complicated.
That's a good point, Mayor. I'm going to use two examples. So I'd like to say that I would think this home, this particular home, this $536,000 home, imagining it, you could find that same home in Bloomington, in Edina, in Minnetoka, and in Plymouth, and all those city rates are different. So check those city rates, and you'll find we're one of the lowest. But shout out to the city of Hector. My first job as a city administrator, if you took that $500,000 home and put that in the middle of Renville County, Hector, Minnesota, I'm thinking that home would have been worth about $200,000, except our city tax rate was 70% because we did not have a lot of property value in Hector. So your value was lower, as you said, Mayor. Our rate was higher, and your property taxes ended up being about the same. But different, different chart, different time, but in Hector, we received the local government aid to help cover our levy. We do not receive local government aid in Eden Prairie. Speaking of Eden Prairie, I don't know where all of our neighbors' levies will end up. All these cities had to set their preliminary levies in September, and they cannot raise them, but they can lower them. But from a sampling of our neighboring cities that went into this meeting in December to approve a levy, some cities may change their levy. We are the lowest of any comparable city that we can track, and the average looks to be about 9%. Every city is different. Every city has different programs, policies, and maybe they're issuing new levels of debt that are adding to their levy. But I just want to illustrate that looking at the increase in the levy itself, we are the, one of the lowest of comparable cities around. And then this second-last slide I have, or third-last slide, again, very hard to read, but this is something I received from a colleague of mine in another city that added all the levy increases in 15, I think it is, comparable cities. Edina, St. Louis Park, Brooklyn Park, Blaine, Eagan, Minnetoka, Woodbury, Burnsville, Bloomington, Plymouth, Lakeville, Maple Grove, Apple Valley, and Eden Prairie added up all the levy increases over the last 14 years, 13 years, and ours is the lowest. So that's a historical illustration of our levy increases. Again, you don't, the point is not to say you have the lowest levy. The point is to be able to say that you're delivering a high level of service at an affordable price. And then lastly, fiscal disparities. Without getting too deep into this program, because this could be a half an hour in and of itself, only in the seven-county metro area, this is not statewide, every single commercial property pays in, puts their value into a pool. And then the actual tax base of the individual communities change based on the pool and the formula of the pool. And Eden Prairie has consistently been one of the top contributors, or we call losers in the program, because the point is if this tax-based sharing program did not exist, that median-valued home next year, total taxes would see about a 6% drop in their value. This is a program that the state legislature operates. The concept is if we share in some of the commercial tax base in the region, cities will not be constantly fighting to kind of get businesses or attract businesses to their community or to say, I'll give you all kinds of tax incentives if you move from this city to that city and try to level the playing field and say regionally, we all share in commercial tax base. That's the idea behind it. But the result is because Eden Prairie's done very well with our commercial tax base, it affects our tax base and our taxpayers. So with that, Mayor, that is the overview that Tammy and I have for you. We can certainly, I know you were throwing questions out during the presentation, we can answer more. And again, as I said when I started, we asked that you hold a public hearing, and then the action tonight is on a resolution adopting the levy and budget for next year.
Counsel, any questions of staff prior to holding the public hearing? We can always ask questions later. So to the audience, anyone in the room tonight in the council chambers wishing to address the city council on just this issue of certifying the 2024 property tax levy and adopting the 2024 budget along with the HRA budget? Please come forward, give your name and address. You can pull the mic down if you want to.
Good evening, everyone. Well, my name is Kavita Reddy. I reside on 16651 Reader Ridge in Eden Prairie. So here I am with about a 24% increase to my property taxes. So what is levied is 24% increase. So what we are seeing, yeah, the number's over there, Eden Prairie being the lowest. Yeah, it sounds good. I wish I was in that bracket, and definitely not. And I just want to give you the reality of what is going on. So with this increase, I'm put more than $3,500 an year increase, which is like, to me, it is outrageous. And where do I pump that money? I don't know. So, and that puts me, my house at 1.1 million. And I bought this home for 720 when it was listed at 865, meaning it did not sell for 865. 720K it was sold for. That was the reality. And the Assessor came last year, last year, when he put the, he came into the house. This time, usually they look outside, he came into the house, meaning you have a good understanding of what the house sells for our values. But, and they went houses around in the neighborhood. And my neighbor home, which is over 7,500, and my home is only over 3,800. And my neighbor's home is a very detailed home, and it was a custom-built. And when the Assessor had an opportunity to compare the homes, he didn't do an apple-to-apple comparison. Yes, that sold for 1.3 million, and whereas my house is not valued at that, it is, it is owned by, you know, a billion-dollar company CEO. And yes, my home sits in a neighborhood with custom homes, but when you are inside the homes, what is it the Assessor doing? They should be, you know, doing an apple-to-apple comparison. That was not done. So I have a couple more points to add. Then, in the same neighborhood, just at least with the knowledge I have from, you know, talking to people, there was another home which had 11% increase. There could be homes with less than 11% increase, but to my knowledge, there's one home that is 11%. I'm sitting at 24 and 11%. I didn't make any home improvement, so has that person. So I want to use an apple-to-apple comparison. When I do that, what is this disparity? 11% under 24%? What was the criteria to put us at 24% when there is 11% there? There could be under 11%. I'm just giving you one example there. And I have another home, which is next to next my home. I, again, I want to use only apples-to-apples. And this home, which is valued around 1 million, and they thought, okay, my home is valued at this price, let me go list this. Back in May of 2023, they went and listed at that price. Till today, six months after, they're sitting in the market, dropped down the price to 849K, still not selling. And the reality is that. And Eden Prairie, you know, the numbers that were presented by the officials, 4.96% is the average increase. And overall county wise, 6.5% is the increase. And whereas you budgeted an increase of 5.1%, and market value rose at 3.5%. These are the numbers I was just getting from you. And median value was low 500s. And my home is a median home, and it's not a custom-built home or any rosy home, you know, with that details. But I am put at 24%. And yes, you know, there were two or three sales in the community, but again, they're not apples-to-apples comparison. But, but I, you know, for whatever may be the reason, whatever the criteria that was used by the Assessors was not right, and it is not justified. And back in May, I reached out to the city questioning this because I thought that, you know, between March and May, I can come to you, but it was too late. So, and here another opportunity came. So I am here. I don't know where to, you know, fill that gap, you know. We have families to run. Yes, Eden Prairie is a beautiful city to live. And, you know, I like all the amenities. I lived in other cities too, but Eden Prairie definitely offers beautiful amenities. But it, but it doesn't mean, you know, you have to put it then.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. I do want to add, just for the sake of you, but also others maybe listening, we do have a process to question the assessment value. And you did mention that, that you missed that date on it. Tonight, we're just setting the levy for everyone. We're not able to deal with the individual homes assessments, but we do have a process for that. So if people receive that assessed value and want to question it, I've actually done that 20-some years ago. There was a question I had on my lot value, and I went in, and the city's very open to talking, and they'll show data and statistics and other sales. So we do have that process for you. I just want to let you know that. Is there anyone else then to speak, address the council?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Vivek, and I'm also neighbor of Kavita. So I just wanted to reiterate, so we are in the same neighborhood, and for my property, we didn't then any improvement, and it is increased by 18%. So when the statistics was presented, that the average increase is 5% and for counties, 7%. So whole of our community is so surprised that there's no improvement has been done. So on what basis Assessor has increased the property taxes so much? So I just requested a council to have Assessors reevaluate and bring down the property taxes, so it would be helpful for everyone.
Thank you. So again, the averages are accurate to what we, we have a budget around 5%, a levy increase around 5%. As it spreads across the whole community, some people will be very high and some will be low. And again, if you're, if you're questioning the value of your home, there's that process throughout the year to make sure that we've got the right value. And by the way, the, Mr. Getchell talked a little bit about this, but the state is very picky. They can't have a community kind of like cheating the system, like making sure all their values are low. We all have to be within 5%. I think the total average, is that correct? total average, is that correct, for the entire city tax base has to be within 5% of whatever is perceived as real value. And real, real value is the market. You mentioned that people are not coming in and giving the, buying homes for the value that they were assessed at, then those values will eventually lower. I mean, in other words, as we go through the year, neighbor, some neighborhoods go up and some will come down. But, I mean, it definitely is frustrating. I, I completely get that. If people are getting 18, 20% tax increases, it's all relative to everybody else. I know that's painful, but if some houses are going up more than other than, it's, in other words, we raise $43 million off of a, what are we at now, 14.3 billion tax base? Did I get that right? So in other words, we raised the, we set the 43 million, and then we go out and pull it from the 14.3 billion tax base. We don't up or down that, so it pulls from the 14.3. So within the 14.3 state formula, people's homes that they invested more in, different neighborhoods go up more than other neighborhoods, it just moves. But the $43 million that we raised stays the same, and we just get that off the 14.3 billion dollar tax base. It's hard when some parts of that tax base go up more than others and pay more. It's still, it's a zero sum game, is what I'm saying. We still raise the $43 million.
Mayor, real quick, if I can just mention detail on value issues, because I said at the very outset, our city assessor is here tonight to talk with anybody that may want to talk, because, you know, historically, again, you received a tax statement based on a value that was set earlier this year, but you questioned the value. And so a couple thoughts would be, as we've done this before, and again, our assessors will meet with anybody at any time. They'll go over your statement, they'll go over your property, they'll come to your house. In terms of the process, so what will happen next is, in early, the early part of '24, people will receive their notices for what their value is in '24 for the taxes next year, or the year after in '25. So unfortunately, you, you got, you kind of got to that late this year, but the council actually appoints a board of real estate professionals that will hear any appeal that a resident has to their value, and they could, they could make a determination on their value, and they meet in here, and it happens in the springtime. Again, there are opportunities even prior to that, where the city assessors might agree to make an adjustment where you don't even need to go before the board, but that process will be coming. So you receive value statements in January, February, you'll be able to contact assessors in February and March, and there will be Board of Appeal meetings in April for those that want to appeal their value.
Perfect. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening wishing to address the council? All right, counsel, if not, I think we've, this is like, I don't know, the fifth, sixth, seventh meeting we've had on taxation. So this is not old to us, but we know this well. So if you're comfortable, somebody closing the public hearing and going ahead and making the motion. Someone.
Move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution certifying the 2024 property tax levy to be $47,138,752, and approve the 2024 budget of $60,322,771, as reviewed by the council, and approve the HRA levy, tax levy and budget of $210,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or further discussion? I just want to say that I think, and I've said this before, the budget is about the most important process, document that we do all year. And if you ever want to know what a city, what the people of Eden Prairie valued back in 1973, just pick a year, go back and look at their budget, because that's what the council set based on the people of Eden Prairie directing them. So this is about the most important thing we do all year. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tammy, for a presentation, and Mr. Geto as well. All right, moving on to our fourth public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. These next two are related to our city fees. This next one are the fees that the city has by ordinance. So each year, we analyze our fees and possibly adjust our fees, and ask that you approve a first and second reading after a public hearing of setting those fees for 2024. You'll see in the packet, we list every single fee, and then we show what the fee is in the current year and what it's proposed to be for next year, and we analyze every fee separately. Tammy talked a little bit about the building fees being every other year, but you can see these fees that are set by ordinance are typically building inspection fees, plan review fees, fees related to land use applications, the kind of fees that you find in city code. You'll see, some of them are proposed to go up 1%, some of them are proposed to go up 2%, and in some cases, they're proposed to drop in half, depending on that fee and our analysis of what fees around us are, or are we capturing our proper costs related to the time it takes to process many of these applications. So again, those fees are set by code, land use, engineering, building inspection are a majority of the fees by ordinance, and it's been customary for the city council, the whole public hearings, for both those fees and then the ones I'm going to mention by resolution.
Great. Before we have a public hearing, any questions? If not, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this issue tonight, first and second reading of the fee schedule ordinance? Counsel, if you want to go ahead and close the public hearing and make the motion.
Move to close the public hearing and approve the first and second reading of the ordinance updating the fee, fee schedule for the administration of official control and adapt resolution approving the summary of the publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
So first and second reading, we need a unanimous vote?
Correct.
Just to let everyone know that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Geto, our last public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, this is by choice of the council. You've always said you've wanted to hold a public hearing anytime you increase these fees annually. These are fees by resolution, so these are fees not tied to city ordinance. Examples of these would be park and recreational program fees, rental fees, community center membership fees, fees related to administration and finance, making copies, you know, other fees related to city business and utilities or engineering that are not by ordinance. And again, all those fees are in the packet, broken down by what they currently are and what they are proposed to be, and they're all evaluated separately in each division. Like you can see, even broken down into the 60 different rooms that the city may provide for rental throughout the community, what the cost per hour of each room rental might be in the city are all available in the packet as well.
And just for, for the sake of the public who might be watching this at home or later on, all of the information you just talked about has been available online for at least a couple weeks, I think.
Correct.
In other words, and certainly, we've seen, had the availability, seen it, it's in our packet. But just to let people know, we're not just voting on something that's on a mystical list that you mentioned somewhere. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on the 2024 fee resolution? If not, counsel, is there a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the fee resolution?
Move, excuse me, move to close the public hearing and adopt the 2024 fee resolution.
It is a very emotional, yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, payment of claims, it's our expenditures, the metaphorical checks that we cut between the last meeting and now. Any items that you wish to question or ask, well, ask questions about? If not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims as submitted?
I'll move approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Tumi?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. So anything else, Mr. Geto or council, to come before the coun, oh, yes, council member, report Mr. Narayan, please. Thank you. I'm glad you looked that way.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, yesterday, we had a community event called Diwali, and some of you able to attend, and it's the first time that event held in Eden Prairie. And when I think about it, this is a true, this is really the Eden Prairie, celebrating multicultural in our city. And we have, I think, around 30 to 50 people around there, I don't count exactly. All the people attended, came to us and told us it's an awesome event. They want to continue these kind of event, and, and all the help city provided, the community really appreciated, Indian community appreciated. And I just want to say thank you to the city for facilitating, enabling the culture, like Indian culture and other cultures, Somali culture, you know, foster in our city. Mayor, you were there, Ms. Tumi, you were there. You, I don't know what your perspective is, I'm not putting any words in your mouth, but please say.
No, I just, it was a wonderful event yesterday. I think it enriches Eden Prairie anytime we can celebrate our cultural diversity. This was sponsored by the Asian Indian, American Indian, I think, Association, the council, and, and I, we were invited, and it was a wonderful event for me to attend. And again, to learn so much about various cultures that are now so present in our community and so much a part of us. So thank you for your role in sponsoring it and initiating it. So good job.
Yeah, thank you for the invite. It was, it was great. I had a good time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before the council this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move the, move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.